Hey Maureen.
Hi.
Hi guys. How are you doing?
Hot.
Well, so far we have what Diane, myself on?
I see Steve, Diane, Joan, and Peter Zarabozzo.
Okay, Steve as in Steve Wolman?
Yes, I'm sorry. Although I thought that Steve Biella is supposed to be joining us as well. And where's my list? Joan, Diane, Steve, Tim Ziegma, and Steve Biella. Andrew notified me he would not be able to attend, and Brian was not sure.
Okay.
George is on.
Hello.
Hey, how are you doing George?
Doing well, thank you.
Terrific.
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Joan, I do have the script that can pop up if you want me to.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know you were gonna be... I did not know you were gonna be in the office, otherwise I would've come in.
That's okay. I wasn't sure what I was doing. It's hard when you leave for a couple of days and you come back and it's like...
Yeah. Everything okay at your end?
Yeah, looks good. Looks good. It's just hit the ground running.
Exactly.
My niece got married, so I was really out of work mode. We have family, we had, you know, a lot of things going on, so, you know, today was... I just hadn't put a lot of thought in over the weekend.
That's all right. We haven't either. I assure you. Okay, so basically we have... So our alternate would be... Is it... You said Peter Zarabozzo is here?
Yes.
Okay, so he would be seated. And then we have myself, Diane, Steve Wolman, we have George Millard. Is Tim Ziegma here?
I'm not seeing him on the screen, no.
All right. Yeah, okay. Is there anyone I'm missing? No, that'd be it, right?
If Peter gets seated, we do have a quorum, and the applicants are on.
Okay.
I don't keep anyone else having joined the meeting.
All right, so it's 5:01 now, so why don't we just go ahead and start the meeting then? So we can call it to order. Maureen?
Yep, that's fine.
And do you wanna...
I'm just gonna share my screen, I think.
And basically people should... Oh, I have to read this?
Can you read that?
Yeah, let me see if I can move this around so that... Whoa, okay. All right, so good evening, everyone, or good afternoon. My name is Joan Beely. I'm the chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. As permitted by the Governor's Executive Orders and indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this meeting may be attended in person or by remote video or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided by the commission for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate and noticed on the agenda posted on the town website. For those who are attending, I would ask that you mute yourselves if you are able to do so, that so we do not get any background noise. Please be advised that the public hearing was postponed from June 17th meeting due to a notice error. This public hearing has been reposted to hear the application of Doug O'Leary, here of Tim Sullivan Esquire, for the special permit use of a full circle golf academy at 170 Deming Road with a related amendment to the approved unified site plan for Deming Road Business Park. Two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another so that everyone who is listening can be heard and what is said can... And we can hear what is being said. And this way it'll provide us with a clear record. For this reason, our town planner, Maureen Juicy, will call the roll as needed. Also, the meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the town's website. New information since the posting will be posted tomorrow. I'm now going to ask Maureen to take attendance by calling the roll. Thank you very much. And Maureen, you're on.
Hey, John Michael O'Brien.
He's excused.
Nope, it's not working. There we go. George Millard.
Present.
Diane Geraci.
Here.
Timothy Ziegma. Is... I'm not seeing him on the line. Ryan Rogan. Also does not appear to be on. Steve Wolman. Present. He raised his hand.
Yep.
Peter Zarabozzo.
I'm here.
Andrew Bagnani asked to be excused. Steve Biella Jr. I do not see either. And Chairman Beely.
I'm here.
Okay, you now have the roll.
Okay.
Try to share my screen right now. Hold on one second. It's not coming up the way it usually appears. Okay, did it stop? Did it stop sharing?
Uh, no.
I'm still sharing, so why is it not? I don't know why this isn't carrying full size on my screen. Here it is. There we go.
Yay.
Sorry about that.
Nah, don't worry. Don't worry, it's all good.
Two screens on my other screen.
Yeah. So the public hearing is... So we've called the meeting to order, and now we're gonna go into the public hearing, which is the special permit application of Doug O'Leary for the Full Circle Golf Academy at 170 Deming Road with an amendment to the Unified Site Plan of Deming Business Park in G.I. 2 Zone. This was rescheduled from July 17. And, okay, so... Who do we have? Do we have Mr. Attorney Sullivan with us?
I'm in the right box to punch. Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great. Okay, give us a little bit of information about this.
Yes, good evening, and I'd like to thank everybody for scheduling this special meeting. My client is on a tight timeframe if this... If the commission does see fit to approve this application tonight in terms of ordering the... Well, first of all, building it out, and secondly, ordering the equipment necessary to conduct his proposed business. But anyways, Attorney Timothy Sullivan on behalf of the applicant, and I just want to clarify that the applicant is actually 170 Deming LLC. And that's on the site plan application and the special permit application. Mr. O'Leary is the member of 170 Deming LLC. So he is a sole member of 170 Deming LLC, and he is in attendance tonight. You don't see his picture, but as you can see, Mr. O'Leary is here with us tonight. He's there as well. I'll be referencing his business partner, who was in that picture as well, Kyle Gallo. He is not a member of 170 Deming LLC, but he is a member of the Virtual Golf Academy. There are 50/50 owners of the Virtual Golf Academy. Some of you may remember Kyle Gallo. He is a longtime Berlin resident and Berlin High School graduate, standout golfer, former professional golfer. In any event, get moving on. I know everybody has... We appreciate taking the time tonight and spending a special meeting. The applications, both special permit and site plan before the commission relate to a change of approved use of the property, specifically Lot 1 of this four-lot subdivision. It's map 10-1, Block 83, Lot 3A1. The street address is 170 Deming Road, which is the first building of Deming Road Business Park LLC. There will be three more buildings. Just some housekeeping. I previously submitted the sign that was posted as of June 1st and all of the letters to the property owners within 500 feet of this lot. We sent two sets of letters out, one for the June 17th meeting, and then after that, we sent one out for tonight's meeting, June 29th. As I stated, the property is part of a four-lot subdivision, which was approved by the commission on November 19th, 2020. I should state that the actual subdivision was approved back in 2015, but the developer did not develop it within their five-year timeframe, so had to come in and get reappraisal, not for the subdivision, because the subdivision map was filed on the land records, but for the special permit and site plan use. Approved at that time was a special permit and application and site plan for small industrial contractor shops pursuant to Section 7(c)(3)E of the regulations. Richard Munson was the principal, is the principal, of Deming Road Business Park LLC, the applicant at that time. I expect Mr. Munson to walk in at any time. He told me he'd be at my office at 5:00 o'clock. He is not yet here, but I expect him to be in attendance tonight. The purpose of tonight's applications is to allow use of Building Number 1 as an insurance agency office, Mr. O'Leary's principal occupation. And I'm going to... Mr. Munson is just joining us.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having this meeting for us.
And it was just about...
Yeah.
All right, so...
Can I interrupt for one second? I want to make sure that I'm sharing the screen of the map. Are you saying... Okay, thank you.
I can see the map, yep. And that's the landscape plan, or that's the grading?
This is L1. I believe this is the L1 plan. I have them all up and ready to scroll. I just...
Maureen, Maureen, before I go further, can we just... Just for the commission's sake, can we just give an idea of where this is on Deming Road?
Okay, so this is on Deming Road, just across from the trash hauler that has all of the the big containers and dumpsters at the east and west end of Deming Road near to Wood... Wood... No, that's not what it's called. Willowbrook Drive, right near Willowbrook Drive. Across the street, the Matabasas Chunk Line runs through this property on the south side of Deming Road. I'm gonna try to scroll over to the... So if you turned off Christian Lane and went towards the Berlin Turnpike, it's on the right, just next to the landfill, the New Britain landfill. Then you come to this property, Gil's Garage. I think that's the name that was there. Is this small garage, which is on the adjacent property to the west, or to the east, rather, going towards Berlin Turnpike? And this, yeah, over here. Let me get everybody out of the way. And I can scroll up to the location map. And as Tim, his attorney Sullivan, indicated, the the plan, the Unified Site Plan and Special Permits, had been granted for the property to be developed. It's under development now. The Building 1, which we're discussing for the change to the special permit use, has been substantially erected. I don't think it has its CO yet. I think there's still site work and some other things going on there. But they were all approved for contractor shop uses. In combination with them coming in for a change of the special permit use from contractor shop to the athletic use, they are asking for a few changes to the Unified Site Plan that affect the landscaping primarily and some utility work, which is easements and utility work, which is why those... That's the plan I pulled up as easiest to demonstrate what I'm anticipating Tim is going to be talking about. So here you see Willowbrook Drive. If you can watch my cursor. This is Deming Road, and it's just to the south. It's kind of a long site. Overall, the Unified Site Plan has wetlands and the Matabasas Chunk Line going through it, which is kind of a configuration of the site making it a little...
Maureen, you moved the map, so it's not showing up. The only thing we're seeing is the north-south arrow. You moved the map.
You can't see the whole thing. Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I was... So on my screen...
You dragged it over to the side.
Yeah.
Think you're going the wrong way.
On the right-hand side of your screen, the key map.
Okay, yep.
You may have to move where...
Yeah, I mean, the videos are... Yeah, okay.
So zoom again, see if I can get even closer.
That's fine.
And to show where you are.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is that... Is that your lucky part, Joan, or would you like...
Yeah, just I want to refresh my memory, and then also to give the benefit to those who may not have been on the commission, just the idea of where the project is. Okay, so with that, Tim, I'm very sorry I interrupted you, but please now go ahead. You have our full attention.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate the lead invite by Maureen. Yeah, this is on the south side of Deming Road, close, very close to Christian Lane, in between the landfill and the New Britain landfill and the old Berube's garage, which is now vacant. In fact, the entire property used to be owned by the Berube family, a branch of the Berube family. Mr. Munson bought it from the Berubes back in 2015. But the purpose of tonight's application is to allow use of Building Number 1. Now, as you look at that print, yeah, it's right where the hand is right now. That's Building Number 1. That is probably 50% constructed as we speak. During the course of construction, Mr. Munson, as the principal of Deming Road Business Park LLC, was marketing the property, and the person who showed interest in that property, Doug O'Leary, who I say to who was in here today, wanted to make use of the property as his insurance agency office, which is Mr. O'Leary's principal occupation, and a virtual golf academy. The virtual golf academy will operate as Full Circle Golf LLC. And as I stated, members of Full Circle Golf are Doug O'Leary and Kyle Gallo, who both of them are in attendance tonight. Tonight's special permit application is pursuant to Section 7(c)(3)F, because this is considered an indoor sports complex permitted. It has to be approved as a special permit use. The insurance agency use is permitted as a right pursuant to Section 7(c)(2)G of the regulations. In support of the special permit application, an updated traffic report has been submitted, as well as an architectural floor plan. The architectural floor plan will show that we are removing the loading docks, because it's no longer going to be necessary due to the fact that there are... It's not going to be a small contractor use of the property. The insurance office is approximately, you know, 750 square feet. The golf academy is approximately 2,850 square feet. The building itself is 3,606 square feet. The previously approved small contractor industrial use required one parking space per 500 square feet of gross floor area. The proposed uses as an office and golf academy require more parking, and the applicant has utilized the most stringent standard of an office of one space per 250 square feet of gross floor area. While the currently approved industrial use has sufficient parking for the proposed use, because you may recall, we had five extra shared spaces. A site plan modification is also proposed. The site plan modification require... Is showing that we're going to remove the loading dock in front of Building Number 1 and create additional parking spaces. In fact, we're creating nine additional parking spaces in front of Building Number 1. We now go from eight parking spaces to 17 parking spaces. The site plan is also proposed to modify certain things to address concerns of the Matabasas District. As Maureen has indicated, and I'm pointing, but you can't see I'm pointing. Maureen has already pointed out that there is a 66-foot main sewer easement that's owned by the Matabasas District. The original site plan approval had some landscaping within the 66-foot easement area and also had some very minor utilities. We are proposing to remove that landscaping, and we're adding landscaping elsewhere. And we are also relocating a fire hydrant. The fire hydrant would have been... I can't point to it here. I'm really... Right about where Maureen's hand is now. We're gonna move it just to the other side of the... Right to there. Yep. That's where the hydrant's being moved to, to remove it from the easement area. And we're also adding, if you could come down to the south, right, they're adding all this landscaping. And if you keep going, we're adding a landscaping along there, because if you go north a little bit now, we've removed some landscaping in that area there, because it's within the easement area. That's the proposal tonight. The changes to the site, to the approved site plan are to the L1, U1, and G1, the grading and erosion control. The only grading and erosion control change is in the parking table, which is within G1, and you can see that right here, showing that we have increased the total spaces from 60 spaces, required being 55 spaces, to 69 spaces, with the required spaces being 61 because of the increased parking requirement of the golf academy and the insurance company use. We ask... We would ask that, if the commission sees fit to approve this application, we would ask that it get approved tonight, close the public hearing, and approve it this evening. Mr. O'Leary is on a very tight schedule to order this equipment. As I think everybody knows, the supply chain has been significantly disrupted by the pandemic. And for him to open sometime in the fall, hopefully October 1st, he has to start getting... He has to start ordering this virtual equipment. And the changes necessary of removing the loading docks, et cetera, the construction schedule needs to be modified as well. Once again, we thank the commission for scheduling this special hearing, for accommodating my client. My client is available to answer any questions. Mr. Munson is here to answer any questions, and I'm free to answer any questions the commission may have.
Tim, this is Commissioner Millard. I guess one of the questions, in looking at the building as it's been going up, it's predominantly a concrete block building, and it looks like it's got, I forgot the number, three or four, you know, large garage bay doors, looking like how it was constructed. How's it gonna change in terms of its appearance from the perspective that it's now going to be used for a different purpose? Is any, you know, a different facade, and windows, doors, any of that kind of stuff?
Yes, very, very good question. In fact, Mr. Munson is here. That's one of the construction changes that's being... That's necessary by this change of use. And in fact, there's not going to be any large loading dock doors. Mr. Munson can answer that question if he wants. He's right here. But I believe there's going to be... It's gonna be framed out with windows and some siding to...
To be clear, we're actually gonna leave the loading dock doors there, just to be very clear. We're gonna leave that there. We're gonna put a different, modern look on the front of the building, with the loading dock doors are gonna stay at this point.
Do we have any pictures or any drawings about what's being proposed for this building to look like?
I don't know if you can see this, but this will be part of what would be something similar to what would be on the form of the building, something with the doors. Those are not the updated ones, but that's about what we're looking at right now.
Okay, I'm just... I'm just looking at the site map, but I don't know if you have any, not necessarily architecturals, but yeah, in a way, maybe they are. But it's just something to show us what the building will look like.
What I'm hearing...
Chair, yeah.
What I'm hearing, I was under the impression that there was going to be some changes made, but it appears that there's gonna be no changes, and it would be consistent with the architectural drawings that were submitted with the application back in November.
Okay. All right. Can you just give me, and I don't mean for it to be a long thing, but can you give me an idea of what virtual golf is? I mean, I think I grasp the idea, but I mean, so if I'm a paper and I'm coming to your business, what happens when I get through the door?
I'm sure. So what we're gonna have is a virtual golf academy. So Kyle is a highly skilled golf professional. So he's gonna be mainly what our focus is gonna be, is a teaching facility. So people would come in to get golf lessons inside. There's a screen that has a virtual image, obviously, and turf that you can hit a ball off of it on the screen in that manner. And then there would be someone that's there approaching the players, or people can go and hit the ball themselves into the screen, as though you're seeing it essentially in front of you live.
Okay, will that be... Will there be like a series of staging areas for different students? Or for people who want to practice or take a course, or like different bays?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, all righty. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Joan, this is Commissioner Millard. I do this all the time. I really welcome this coming to Berlin. It's a, you know, it's a great thing to have in the offseason, you know, or, you know, especially in the winter and things like that. So these are popping up all over the place. They're usually very well-run. They're...
Have you... Just for your experience, George, have you ever used one?
I use one all winter long for the past couple of years over at Oakwood and Glastonbury. And Lyman Orchard has the same type of setup for teaching facilities, so that they... There's a lot of demand for them, and they're usually pretty well-run.
I have no doubt it's gonna be... It's gonna be a great addition here in town. Hopefully, my husband will get that. He did. All right, go ahead, Maureen. Did you have something?
So I have a couple of things to add and say. Number one, I want the commission to be aware that the special permit and site plan, I think it's best to act on them separately. So it'd be the site plan amendment to the previously approved Unified Site Plan that addresses some of the site issues, the change of parking and the landscaping that was changed. And then a special permit, a vote with regard to the special permit use for the golf academy, just so everyone realizes those are two different items. And just reiterate, as Attorney Sullivan explained, that the office use within the building will be, is a permitted use regardless in the zone now, so that would have been permitted to go in there regardless. I also wanted to reiterate that the comment that some of the modifications made, particularly the landscaping, and I switched my screen, are in response to the Matabasas District's concerns with the landscaping being within their area and that the applicant has been working with the Matabasas District. The Matabasas District also submitted some comments and having to do with the easements that are required in order to access both their, the Matabasas, as well as the utility metering controls that will be on the property and the water district to access those as well. They did... They're all working on that verbiage and believe that they can, you know, come to the conclusion of verbiage that works for all, with certain things being noted specifically, such as rights to access and the ability to access those meters. noted specifically such as rights to access and the ability to access those meters. And of the calibration and maintenance of the meters and and the pump stations, you'll see on this plan, the meters for the that would be of concern to Mattabasset and water control are here with these little mini pump stations adjacent to each building that then feed into that. And so those are just some of the alterations that were made in order to satisfy the players, for lack of a better word, interested parties. He mentioned the addendum to the traffic study, I wanna read just a little portion of the letter from on the traffic study that was done from Billitt and O'Neill LLC Crash Reconstruction Traffic Engineering. Their conclusion in summary is still the professional opinion of the Latin O'Neill LLC that the probable expected traffic to be generated by the proposed Deming Road Business Park can be safely and efficiently introduced into as well as accommodated by the adjacent roadway system. The development traffic will not disrupt the continuing continuing key of weekday peak hour traffic flow on Deming Road or the area roadway system. The proposed onsite parking spaces will be more than adequate to accommodate the proposed land uses. And that was in their addendum number two dated June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one that was submitted. Then I wanna move on to the Mattabasset District and Berlin Water Control comments that I would like to have included if you choose to have a positive motion for this application. Berlin Water Control comments were they, and actually before I say this, I'll say the Fire Marshal, Economic Development, Building Official, Police Chief, Board of Police Commissioners, Engineering, Inland Wetlands and Health District all submitted no comment with regard to the changes to the application, while the Fire Marshal said he met with Mr. O'Leary on the interior code requirements. That's a pretty typical, you know, the departments do that. On Berlin Water Control, this is a Berlin Water Control Commission, BWCC customer. Water and sewer assessment should be paid along with connection and permit fees for the first building. BWCC staff should observe water and sewer connection. BWCC should be given the same authority in the easement to maintain, calibrate and or inspect the meter as the Mattabasset District. And then the Mattabasset District in summary of of letter received on June ninth dated May twenty-first. We have received the revised utility plan and landscape plan to reflect the removal of plantings and utilities other than the ones to require to cross over the other side of the parcel to feed the back two buildings. Our only comment is that the hydrant shown in the right of way, we relocated to outside of the right of way, which as Attorney Sullivan indicated, had been done since this letter was written, the revised plan, you see on your screen reflects that. They are working on the declaration of easement documents, which should be easement documents, including the location and and maintenance of the metering filed with revisions as mutually accepted acceptable to Deming Road Business Park, Berlin Water Control and the Mattabasset District. That in addition, prior to construction, the district will require, and these are requirements of the Mattabasset District, not of a town entity, that the pump station valve pit and meter layout details be provided, the flow meter, shop drawings and associated operation and maintenance annual and all work in the district's trunk sewer shall be performed in the presence of the district contractor to provide a minimum seventy-two hour notice of any work scheduled to be performed in the district's trunk sewer. So just like water control, they want to know when what is happening.
All right, terrific, thank you, Maureen. Going back to the commission, do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Joan, this is Commissioner Millard, I I do have a question just in in general regard to the site application addendum that was presented, there's one of the last paragraphs is a lot of verbiage about how the facility is going to be used, which I don't have a problem with, but is is that a gating factor for them, does that become part of it or are they have some flexibility to, you know, have other uses of it? Does it become restrictive in how they operate?
So so I guess my comment to that would be that as far as their own operation, I think it has been done where the commission has asked whether an applicant is is asking to lock themselves into that or if that was for general purposes and then the commission has the ability to to indicate in their motion that the the use could grow subject to staff review, something along those lines if as so so many, so often we see facilities come in and they have certain parameters and sometimes their parameters have to be a limiting factor. We had one recently where, you know, they're not allowed to do something in a certain area of the building. You know, you can't have display, you can only have storage, something like that. But a typical growth of a business, and so it's kind of, it's called intensification as opposed to expansion may be allowed by your by your motion.
So the purpose of my question is to just get an understanding of whether people think the parking is adequate. And this is with my use of virtual golf facilities. If if it were to change from what they were proposing and they were, it says the facility may offer some virtual golf. If they, if they started to offer a lot of virtual golf, it would, it could potentially increase the number of people using the facility. So with with four bays, technically, you know, you you could accommodate sixteen people playing golf along with who's ever monitoring the position along with whatever traffic is going into their real estate business. I'm not saying that's a bad use or good use, I'm just trying to ascertain whether, you know, that there's enough parking.
So from the zoning standpoint, the use being categorized as an indoor sports complex. A number of years ago, the commission made a determination that the indoor sports would fall under the one per four hundred square foot parking ratio. And so that was a determination made and that is based on square footage of the use as opposed to commission discretion. Although it was a determina interpretation by the commission because some of these new uses had to be decided what category they fit into.
Okay, thank you.
It's it's Tim Sullivan again, very insightful question by Commissioner Millard. Yes, we would like it, that was just a general proposal. As I stated earlier, we have shared parking approved on the site. We overstated the indoor sports complex, we use the more intensive parking requirement of the office use. But right now we have seventeen spaces for lot number one, total spaces in the in the entire all four lots, the sixty-nine spaces, only sixty-one are required. So we have an additional eight shared spaces that could be allotted to that seventeen. And the the, as the parking report indicated, we have ample parking right right now before we even get into the shared spaces, and that's even overstating it for the using the one per two hundred and fifty square feet as opposed to one per four hundred for the virtual golf academy. But very, very, very good question, but we we would like as market conditions dictate to be able to use this facility to 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 its maximum use if they do want to use it for a for a virtual golf setup in addition to the virtual golf academy. I think the parking is is more than adequate to do that, to allow that that use to grow, but as as presently indicated, their business model is to make full use of Kyle Gallo as a teaching pro, something that a lot of these virtual golf academies don't have, that's gonna, it's it's kind of a special use of this particular business model we'll we'll attempt to make use of.
I I just as Commissioner Millard again, I I see it very similar to what they're doing at Lyman with their new facility out there. And and I want you to be successful, I I know one of the things that they've done there, which you don't really mention, although you, it could be included in it, is is they actually sell sort of like, you know, practice time in 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 blocks to people. So they they're getting a lot more use out of their facilities type of deal, I mean, you can only teach so many people, especially, I don't know how many pros you're gonna have, but it kind of limits you to to teaching one or two people or or groups at a time, so, you know, getting the most use out of your four bays is some other innovative things you could do. I tell you, take a look at what Lyman's doing in the winter, you know, their their facility's pretty, pretty well utilized full time, which I think is a good thing, makes you guys successful.
I agree.
Plus, I want to use it, so.
There is.
You think?
There is a demand for this, there aren't, there aren't many at all in the area. Unfortunately, the golfers in the area have to travel outside of town, whether it be to Glastonbury or to Lyman or to Waterbury at this time or or Southington at this time, so I think this would fill a niche in in this area.
I mean, this is something if you guys make arrangements too, you know, you could get Berlin High School golf team involved and, you know, whatever, that's like, it would be awesome.
I have a question, what's, what are we doing with lot number three in the back? Just to refresh my memory, because I'll be honest, Maureen, I received basically, I didn't receive the updated notes for this, I looked for them in the email, but.
No, that happened with my days off and lack of Adam, that we had some.
That's okay, but this, what did we have determined for this lot three?
So all these other, all the lots, lot one, lot two, lot three and lot four have all been approved as contractor shop uses, they all were granted special permit uses. They developed, including their buildings and site plan and the landscaping, etc. I actually wanted to elaborate on that landscaping just a little bit more again. And so that that's what these will be, and that's why most of these lots, if you can see what I'm looking at here, I'm at building number three now, is these are overhead door areas. So it's substantially paved, what I call paved land in front of each side, in each of the fronts of the buildings where they face the parking areas. Because they're for trucks to access their overhead doors. This building, the the site plan or the special permit is only relating to lot one. But the site plan changes affect a couple of these other areas over here as they, I'm sorry for the plus minus there, as the Mattabasset District's comments. It comes through, the Mattabasset trunk line comes through here. So with regard to the front elevation, I I'm hearing that the landscaping, the new landscaping in front of building number one facing the parking area may not be feasible if they're leaving in the overhead doors. Although pulling back for the parking spaces to be there does allow for some landscape area, so I guess I'm asking for a little, if if it's the pleasure of the commission, for a little more explanation of if you're leaving the garage doors, is it just because you're leaving the garage doors so that they're you you have those openings or are you leaving the garage doors to create an access in which case the this can become or cannot become a landscape area?
Not, it would just be for doors and just the look of whatever the building would be as far as that would go.
Is that clear to the commission, did you?
Does that mean it won't be landscaped in front, they'll actually be working doors?
I said, we're not putting on using the doors as means of egress of the building.
So the doors will function as windows instead of being for vehicular access or or people access, they'll be for for functioning as a window and you will be following this plan by putting in landscaping in this area up to the parking area, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that, so to to address the elevation there, there was no landscaping along the east side of this building previously and now there will be landscaping along the easterly wall of this building and adjacent to the new parking spaces that are here. The other comment was, or that I wanted to make was that landscaping in this area, which was part of the approval, you can see there's a hedgerow here of, there are pretty tall trees that exist and the applicant was going to be putting some along here to shield the parking and the two buildings behind as you are on Deming Road. The Mattabasset District doesn't want them to place them there because of the because it's within the trunk line easement area, which is quite extensive and actually crosses on to this property of for Deming LLC, which is not their property. So in discussions with Attorney Sullivan, we discussed adding landscaping adjacent to the building. Let me scroll up again so you don't get the cursor things. We add, we talked about putting landscaping here so that it breaks up the walls of the building, the plain walls that you can see or will likely be able to see as you're traversing down Deming Road and located that side instead, and I'm sorry, my voice is just dead today.
No, that's okay, are they gonna do landscaping along Deming Road to the front of the building just to address it out?
There is some landscaping that was approved in this area and this area, I believe that was all previously approved landscaping. Tim can correct me if I'm incorrect, that there was landscaping along the roadway.
Yes, that was that was part of the November two thousand twenty approval.
Okay.
Got a couple of bushes that are there all through here.
All right, and it's gonna be basically lawned out in the front along Deming Road with the landscaping, so will there be grass there or?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. All right, any other questions from the commission? All right, do we? Is.
I'm gonna stop sharing, if you want me to bring something back up, let me know.
Yeah, all right, Diane, Steve, Peter, is there, is there any questions that you have or comments? We are in the public hearing. Okay, and is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission at this point because it is a public hearing, we have not yet closed it? All right, hearing none. Is there any motions from the commission regarding the public hearing?
Yep, Commissioner Jorsey, motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Diane, is there a second?
Commissioner Wolman, second.
Thank you, Steve. Any further discussion? And Maureen, do we need to do a roll call or we can we just?
If I may, I think I, because it's completely virtual, I would prefer.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So George Millard. Steve Wolman.
Aye.
Diane Jorsey.
Aye.
Peter Zara Bozo.
Aye.
And Chairman Dealey.
Aye.
Okay. So we we have it, and so now we close the public hearing. All right, the next up is Commissioner Business, you had it as May twentieth and June third, were those supposed to be minutes for the meetings?
Those were minutes, those were not distributed, the May, the the June third are available, but they're not. They, I believe, ended up being emailed out, so I will move on to the next meeting if that's okay with everyone.
Oh, that would be great, we don't need a motion for that, really?
I don't think so, they can be.
Okay, great, let's go on to the old business, which is the special. Okay, great. Let's go on to the old business, which is the special permit application of Doug O'Leary for the Full Circle Golf Academy. At one seventy Deming Road with the amendment to the unified site plan and Deming Business Park. Um, I'm sure, should have said, uh, one seventy Deming Road LLC, right? You wanted it as LLC state, uh, Tim?
Yes.
And, uh, and it's in the G one, um, two zone. Okay, um, so commissioned, what's your, what's your pleasure? We've heard the applicant, we've had our questions, public hearing is closed.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the unified site plan of Deming Business Park in the G one two zone.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Is that subject to staff comments?
Oh, excellent, Diane. Good catch.
Of course, Diane.
Thank you, and, um, and as Maureen suggested, this motion is just for the site plan amendment, correct?
That is correct. We actually have to do this, uh, Maureen, you suggested we treat this as two special permits. One for the site plan amendment and then one for the special permit.
Two, two motions, yes.
Okay, so two motions. So this, Steve, just to clarify, is gonna be for the site plan, uh, amendment?
Correct.
Okay, terrific, and Diane?
I, I will second his motion.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Is there further discussion on that? Um, and you're gonna do the roll call for that?
George Miller.
Yes.
Um, Diane Jorsey.
Aye.
Steve Wolman.
Aye.
Peter Zarabozzo.
Aye.
And Chairman Bailey.
Aye. Okay, so we have that portion. Now we need a motion for the special permit.
I'll make a motion for approval of the special permit application of Doug O'Leary. For Full Circle Golf Academy at one seventy Deming Road, uh, Deming Road Business Park, G one two zone.
Okay, uh, thank you, Steve. Do we have a second to Steve's motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, was staff notes Diane, or no staff notes this time?
Always staff notes.
Okay.
And as always, of course, Diane.
Very good, very good.
I know it's not, I know it's not the public hearing anymore, but if I could just clarify that it's, uh, the applicant, it was one seventy Deming. LLC, not Doug O'Leary. Thanks.
Oh, okay, you want to somebody, I'm just, I'm just reading my little footnotes here. Alright, but thank you, Tim. I'll take that. I'll take that as a correction. Alrighty, so, um, we had the motion and we had the second. By Diane, so Maureen, do you want to do the honors of calling the roll?
George Miller.
Aye.
Steve Wolman.
Aye.
Diane Jorsey.
Aye.
Um, Peter Zarabozzo.
Aye.
Thank you, and Chairman Bailey.
Aye. Okay, congratulations, guys. You've done it.
Once again, we appreciate your special meeting tonight. We know it took time out of your regular schedule.
Yeah, we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'm glad that we got it done. I'm glad some, I'm glad that Commissioner Miller will have someplace safe to go this winter.
I improved my game, it's terrible.
Maybe even talk the rest of us into shying our hand at it. Oh, that's tennis.
It's a lot of fun. Use your hands in golf, Joan.
Alright, well, with that, I thank all the commissioners that are here, uh, for their due diligence and job well done. So does anyone want to adjourn or you want to just have a social hour?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I knew you would. Do you have a second?
Second, Commissioner Wolman.
Alright, thank you, Steve. Uh, and the time is gonna be five fifty-two PM for the record. Uh, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed out there. Hearing none. Thank you for, uh, hosting the meeting and, uh, see y'all later.
Take care.
Special meeting, I appreciate it.
No problem. Hope you had a good time at the wedding, Maureen.
Thank you, it was lovely. It was really very nice, yes.
Yeah. Uh, how old is your niece?
Uh, thirty-seven maybe?
Wow.
Yeah, thirty-five, thirty-seven. No, I think she's up for the, she's probably thirty-seven, thirty-eight by now, yeah.
So she finally got a call, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good for her.
Beautiful.
Did you get pictures?
Um, I have some. Um, they had a great photographer who was everywhere and, um.
Now, where was the wedding held?
In the backyard.
Oh, here in Connecticut?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, excellent, yeah, yeah. Alright, now are you gonna be in the office tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, I do have to come in to do some work. Um, so I'll have a chance to wish you a happy Fourth of July before I, before I run out.
That would be really good. That would be good. We'll catch up and talk about a few other things, so that's great.
Alrighty, yeah, much to talk about unfortunately. Alright, you take care, have a good one.
Thank you, you too.
Will do. See you tomorrow. Night.